Evening everyone.
Hey, hello.
Evening.
And thank you for the reminder. Very nice to get the links and easy, easy access for the meeting to start up.
Kevin, is John Savage with us tonight?
Uh, he has not joined the Zoom yet. Um, I have not heard if he is already planned as an absence or if he just hasn't come in yet.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I haven't heard either.
Yeah, he was not, uh, he did not tell me he needed to be absent tonight. He was responding to email earlier.
Should we just give a couple of minutes, a minute or two? Oh, here he comes. Hi, John.
Hey, Sylvia, how are you?
Good. Okay, it looks like we're ready. If staff is ready, we can go ahead and, uh, start the meeting. So we want to call the meeting to order. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Savage?
Here.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yeah.
Chair Lemus?
Here. Thank you. And then moving on, have there been changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agen- agenda this evening, Chair Lemus.
Thank you. Uh, what about oral and written communications? I saw an email that came through. Is that, that's for today's item, correct?
That's correct. There was one email that came through from Column Weeks of Generation Housing, uh, and he asked that it be forwarded by staff to ensure that all commissioners received it, and I do believe that it was sent to all commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, then we'll go to matters at hand. Uh, the first one is the multi-use permits and city council appeals, number one, item number one.
Thank you, Chair Lemus. Um, my name's John Paul Harris. I'm a senior planner with the city of Katati, and I'll be presenting this item tonight. Next slide, please, Kevin. So, uh, what this, uh, ordinance does, you'll be asked to, um, adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance that does two things. One of them you've already looked at before previously in March, which was to remove the requirement for a use permit to develop multifamily housing in the NU and NM zoning districts. And then the other, uh, is a, is a administrative change that would change the procedures for city council appeals. And the ordinance itself is on packet pages forty-one through fifty. Next slide, please. So for the background on, on the item, in March seventh, the planning commission looked at a suite of, uh, what we were calling multifamily streamlining, uh, amendments, um, that included several components that came out of our housing element and out of our land use, uh, element of the general plan. Um, and they included, um, removing use permits in the NM and NU district, increasing the height without a use permit in NU, uh, districts, uh, increasing the amount of land coverage that was permitted, and, um, and ultimately this, the, uh, planning commission chose to recommend city council approval. Uh, we took it to the city council on April twenty-sixth. They reviewed, uh, all the elements and chose to adopt some of them, including the land coverage change and the change in height. But we're not comfortable moving forward with removing the use permit in the NM and NU districts. Uh, largely, they wanted to ensure, um, I think they shared an opinion of a couple of the members of the planning commission that some of these projects could have an effect, and they wanted to ensure that there would be adequate public input and the ability for the city council to review, um, an application if it was highly controversial and they felt it could have a big effect on city count, uh, excuse me, on the cities, um, the quality of life in the city. So, um, in April, uh, excuse me, in May twenty-fourth, Noah could return to the city council and presented several ideas, um, about how to move forward, um, with, with the proposal. One was to, uh, kind of just not implement certain housing elements, uh, which the city council is not comfortable with. The other was to elevate all projects to the city council, all design review for multifamily to the city council, which was a burden, kind of a strong burden, uh, on any applicant. And then the other was to revise the appeal procedures, so to make it so that there is a clear mechanism for the city council to, um, appeal decisions by lower decision-making bodies, the director or the planning commission, and, um, and just, and, and, and provide an avenue for them to do that. At the same time, we recommended eliminating a section of the code which is referred to as directed referral, and I'll discuss that a little bit more. The, after some discussion, the city council decided that they did want to revise the appeal procedures, and so they directed staff to craft the ordinance and bring it back for consideration. And also, they said that they did want to revisit the, um, uh, the proposal to eliminate the use permit in NM and NU zoning districts. So the proposal is to take it to them tomorrow night after this body's had a chance to weigh in on it. Um, next slide, please. So if you recall, uh, what the proposal is to remove the use permit requirement in the NM and NU zoning districts, uh, is actually, we just updated our land use table to show that it would be permitted. Um, the primary effects of doing so is it may limit the scope of SEQA, um, though we don't expect it will do much in terms of limiting the scope of SEQA, and that's because largely, there's a, there's a whole series of SEQA exemptions that apply to projects like this. And one, and then another one is that, um, infill projects, which is where a lot of these parcels are located, um, are typically exempt from SEQA review. So I don't expect that to have too much of a, uh, impact, but it could. Um, the other is, is, um, the findings that we have to make. We would not have to make use land, uh, use permit findings, but we still have to make our design review findings, and, um, the project would still remain discretionary. It wouldn't be a ministerial by right, uh, decision. And as I talked about in, in March, the, the design review findings and the use permit findings and staff's opinion are very redundant, very similar. Um, and in fact, there's actually more and more difficult findings with a design review than there are with the use permit in an area that we've already designated for housing. Um, okay, let's move on to the next slide. And I just wanted to bring up the map again to show you the NM and NU zoning districts where, uh, where this would, would affect. It's largely along, uh, East Katati Corridor or East Katati Avenue Corridor, um, and then just off of, um, kind of old red, kind of more downtown area, or more urbanized areas. And this is in, this map is also in your packet if you want to look at it closer. Um, next slide, please. And then a reminder on the housing element programs so that, uh, this ordinance would implement. One is the barrier removals for multifamily development, and it says that we would remove two potential barriers. One of them would be to remove the conditional use permit for multifamily development of five or more units in the NU zone. And it also mentions a parking that we would, uh, adjust our parking. We're not talking about that tonight, but that is still part of the same program. Um, then the other program is again to look at, uh, whether or not affordable housing, um, was being at all hampered by the use permit, and if so, develop, um, uh, excuse me, remove the use permit requirement in the NU zone. Uh, let's go to the next slide. There's also a land use element, action item LU four A, which is for, uh, directs the, the city to review and update the city's development permitting process to provide a streamlined and straightforward process. And it may consider methods to streamline the process, including, uh, the review by city staff as well as various committees, and reduce redundancies and delays. And so under this action element, that's where, uh, staff proposed that include the NM district in the proposal. So it speaks specifically about NU. We chose to also present the NM as, uh, as a place where you may want to get rid of the use permit. Again, because this are areas that we've already designated for this particular housing, um, that when that process was done, there was an evaluation about whether this was an appropriate place for housing, and the decision-makers at that time decided it was. And like I said, mentioned before, the findings, um, are largely redundant. Okay, next slide, please. So, uh, the city council uh, directed staff to go ahead and amend the, the, uh, appeal process. I'm just gonna, we gets rid of one section that's called a directed referral. This is where an, as individual city council member can basically write to the city manager and say, hey, I want this review body to look at the project. It seems to be an automatic thing, and, um, there was, members of the council didn't really like how one particular council member could direct the review of a project and say who could review it. As well, staff was concerned that that could create problems by bypassing the planning commission, for example, um, and perhaps, though, I'm trying to figure out an example, but even it could be contrary to state law in that there are certain things the planning commission has to look at once the planning commission has been created by the council, and we don't want to create a situation where we could do something that could be challenged. So what it does then is it creates a new set, eliminates a directed referral, and it creates a new section which very much parallels the existing appeals process for anybody in the city, um, which are not to create something brand new, but just gonna tailor it so that, uh, the city council has a process that they could follow, uh, excuse me, follow, which might, which very, which resembles the, the, the existing appeal process. And that is, it's pretty simple. Within ten days of a director or planning commission decision, the city council member would write to, uh, the city manager uh, and provide one reason, and really only one reason, and that is that the, the project could have a material and significant effect on the quality of life in Katati. Um, any council member can, as an individual, appeal a decision just like any other citizen could. But, um, there would likely be a presumption of bias, and they would not be allowed to, they'd, they would be, they would have to recuse themselves from, from that discussion. So this one, they, they just say, hey, we want the city council to consider appealing this decision. Um, they do that in writing. The city clerk then would place it on the next available agenda. And then this, at that, at that particular meeting in a public forum, the, the city council could decide whether or not they want to appeal the decision of like a director or planning commission decision. It would require a majority vote by the council, and, um, if they appealed the, uh, director decision, it would go to planning commission. This is just like it would for anybody else. And if they were, were to appeal the planning commission, it would go to the city council. And you can see that ordinance language on packet page, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. It's at the end of, end of the, your packet on page. I apologize.
Forty-seven, page forty-seven.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah. And next slide, please. So that's what the proposal is. Um, the recommendation is adoption of the catch rep resolution recommending city council adoption of the draft ordinance, uh, to remove the use permit requirement for multifamily housing and revise the administrative procedures for city council appeals. And I'm now available for any questions and comment.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, so first we'll go to, uh, commissioners. Does he have commissioners have any questions of staff on this item? Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So, um, by removing the use permit, this, this would incorporate situations like a single-family resident going to multifamily or a two-unit multifamily resident going to a three or four multifamily. Is that correct? Without a use permit.
So, um, I don't know about the first example about single-family to multifamily unless there was a multifamily-zoned property that had just a single-family home on it. Uh, we do have a couple of properties like that, um, especially along East Katati Avenue, where there's an old home, but it's zoned, uh, for a higher density. So yes, in that particular case, the, a project like that could go, uh, well, it would go to a planning commission. Um, but you wouldn't, and you would do design review, you would have to do the design review on it, and any, anything else that was associated with the application, but it wouldn't require a use permit.
Okay, and then, um, if someone had a duplex next to them and they wanted to upgrade that to a three or fourplex, or I'm assuming more, then that also would not require a use permit. Is that correct?
That's right. If it was already zoned MN or NU.
Got it. And then.
But, let, let me, let me add one other thing. Um, since this has been part of the code for, I would imagine, a very long time, any of those multifamily properties uh, would likely have had a use permit, um, which means you don't get to revisit the use permit. It runs with the land, um, and it stays with it. So, um, if it was a multifamily property, it probably already has a use permit associated with it.
Do we know what percentage of properties have that?
No.
I just, okay, I just don't want to go off of assumptions. Um, and then, um, do you know, uh, kind of what our guidance is for when we utilize or implement a use permit? Because when I'm looking at the list of items of which we require a use permit, it, I don't see consistency across the board in. It, I don't see consistency across the board in impact, I see some things that are far less impactful. Um, that would require a use permit, whereas I I I don't have a duplex next to me, but I've I've know this area, these areas very well near. Um, the square down east Catati, down west Catati, et cetera, and I see a lot of. Um, areas where this could be heavily impactful to families that. You know, have a good mixed use throughout the community, but I think would be rather shocked if if they didn't. Feel there was good oversight over a significant change like that, so I guess I'm just wondering. Like, what guidance do we follow? To identify when a use permit is appropriate or not?
Well, I. The way it work, we have a comprehensive zoning code, um, which lists what uses can go where. And. Generally, a a use permit is intended to provide a relief. To an applicant or. Because your zoning code says either yes or no, you can't do that, but there's certain projects in certain areas that could be okay. But they require a harder look. And that's kind of, you know, I I there's no science to it, it's really an art. But that's what it is, it's like a variance in that it provides a relief to a very strict code. So generally what we do when looking at those and they change, and I will admit Catati has a lot of use permit requirements, um, more so than other communities. Generally is like we consider like, would you want to prohibit the use or is it the type of use that, hey, we want to bring it here? To the to the, you know, to the planning commission or the council for just a deeper dive. It also allows us to apply conditions to a project. And so there are areas where we feel like a project should be conditioned. With 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 development, though, you have the additional layer of design review. So you are going to go through that process as well as opposed to like, um. Bringing a commercial use into an existing building or something like that.
Okay, and last question, in that regard, though. When we have design review come to the commission, I know we focus very closely on design review, not. We really try to stay in our lane and not determine if it should or shouldn't happen, it's more how it should happen and what it should look like and the factors that should play into it, so. I'm just curious if that would still be appropriate oversight or kind of. Like for like oversight or if or if use permit and design review are different.
I think in multifamily housing in a multifamily zone district. I think it's it's a redundant act, I think you really are, you're gonna have a hard time denying that type of project successfully. I don't know if Noah wants to add anything to that comment.
Yeah, I I would agree, I think John Paul has characterized it appropriately, the proposal before the commission is to remove the question of. Should this use go here, so the use permit question in areas that the city has kind of already decided. Um, through their zoning that these are appropriate for multifamily housing. But adding to that, I would say from the the layperson's perspective. The amount of oversight will potentially be, you know, pretty much the same because it will still get a notice of application, it will still go to the planning commission for decision making. Um, those to this, the decision or the community will still get the same amount of notifications as they would if a use permit was there. Um, but then I would also agree with John Paul that given the the amount of housing legislation that's passed recently. Uh, for the city to to, if if the use permit were to stay there. Even though we've already essentially committed to removing it in our policy documents, the general plan and the housing element saying to do this. If we were to keep it there. And a and a a good project came forward that addressed its issues and met the city's rules and was just denied the use permit, I think they would definitely win on appeal or. In litigation, because we've already kind of said, this is where multifamily housing goes by zoning it in those districts.
Thank you. Um, okay, next we'll go to Vice Chair Hancock.
Yes, hello, um, certainly a bit of whiplash going on, sort of trying to understand this, and particularly with the council and stuff, but. Wasn't it, I knew we had some iteration before that the state law. That if certain types of housing are within, um, or close to certain amounts of public transit. Then they would be permitted, how does that? Um. Not sure how how does this weigh up against what we're considering this evening with the use permit?
Well, there's there, uh, the there's various statutes and. Um, probably the the prime, the big one, and it doesn't even require that you be near transit. Is that what's called the Housing Accountability Act? And it. Basically tells the city, there's only certain reasons you can deny a project, a housing project specifically. And um, and those reasons are largely, you know, it's got to be an overwhelming public health and safety issue or or something along those lines. Now, there are proposals to allow for in reduce parking standards and increase height. Um, in the right within that area, and there was just a bundle of housing laws that came out and I would have to, you know, review them. Or go into effect in January to let you know if there's anything specific, but there's nothing that. Outside of that, I don't think there's anything special. In terms of proximity to. Um, like a like the train station.
John Paul, I think he's probably referencing S P thirty five.
Well, S P thirty five can be applied out anywhere in the city. I'm trying to think if there's something special in terms of, um, for, you know, forcing. Approval of housing within half a mile, I think it just gives you more benefits. But nothing that says, oh, you have to approve it if it's within half a mile. Nothing more than what the Housing Accountability Act does anyway, but again, it's a bundle of legislation that just came out and it's going to require some dissecting.
But I think I'll just add, I think Vice Chair Hancock, to your point, there's multiple layers of legislation. And in some instances, developers get to kind of jump into a carpool lane, so to speak. For their project and bypass some of these other discretionary elements, which would include. Uh, SEQA in some instances, which would include design review or use permits in some instances. So this is a proposal that's before the commission that, um. Would not affect those rules in any way, but is saying if someone were subject to the city's rules and requirements in these zoning districts. We're gonna propose to remove the use permit and allow them to just be the the review would just be focused on. The design of the project rather than the actual use elements.
So so I guess I'm asking that question, thank you, the S P thirty five. Does that effectively, um, for a lot of these zones mitigate, um, sort of nullifying? A a requirement for a permit, you what what value is the use permit other than somebody's got to pay? Make that payment. Um, two thousand five hundred dollars. Um. To activate that process.
Yeah, so I I would add two things, one. S P thirty five is kind of a separate process and it has its own requirements, so people have to kind of opt in to wanting to do that, one of which is paying prevailing wage for the construction workers, so there's. There's kind of these other caveats that say if you want that, then you have to do these other things. But to your point, um, the big difference is that if there's still a question of whether the use is approvable or not. Then when we do our SEQA analysis, so the environmental review. We also look at a a broader range of potential impacts associated from the use rather than just that from the design.
Okay, I think I'm, um, I'm understanding just that it's complicated, so so the second question is, is that we really, I mean, there isn't a lot of. N U and M L, um, N U and, um, N M. That is actually strictly available, that is. Within those areas, it's it's already either got some small property development, it's not this. There's very little that's actually undeveloped. Right now. Um, that I can see of, is that? Is that true? That's your understanding?
Yep, yeah.
So it's basically going to be.
Largely all developed already that way, there's some parcels that are underdeveloped, especially along like East Catati Avenue. That that could. There could, or they're vacant or nearly vacant. Um, but pretty much everywhere else, the it was, it's already built out.
Okay, and on on that, on page thirteen, where you, packet page thirteen, where you represent that map, there's some areas that are crosshatched. Which I think represents, it doesn't identify it.
Those are mobile home parks specifically.
So if somebody wanted to, and has been cases in the past, redevelop that as a. Um, a multifamily. They basically look to evict everybody in that park and redevelop it as something else, is that something that would? Be impacted by this?
Not not this particular decision, because, uh. Modifications and and closing of mobile home parks has its own separate process under state law, very different process. Um, which I I can't even begin to get into with this, but so no, it has its own separate process. Which involves the mobile home park residents. Um. And, uh, no, so that this particular ordinance wouldn't affect that kind of conversion.
Good, that sounds good, now I read that letter from, um, the 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 housing. Um, and I am just wondering, the comment that they've got of. Material effect on the quality of life versus developing robust design, objective design standards. I- is it your opinion that, or staff's opinion, that we do have robust objective does design standards now?
Yeah, we 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 just recently adopted objective design review standards, um. I don't know, just was it maybe a year ago, maybe just a little more? Yeah.
That's that's what I was thinking that we actually had in there, um. One last question that is maybe not directly related to this, but is in the general bigger picture, we we. I think you said parking. Is not strictly being considered, but we have changed the parking requirements in the past. Or in the previous ordinance, and particularly, I just. Want to ask about E V charging and E V ready. Parking spaces, there's this, I guess it's coming up in. The building standards, but. If the state has an objective by twenty thirty five that everybody will start buying E V vehicles. Are we in any way precluding that new builds here? Will have E V ready when somebody wants to buy? An electric vehicle? How is Catati dealing with that with the? Um, I guess that combination of affordable housing.
Yeah.
And and the state's objectives. Of, you know, can we, do we have an objective like twenty thirty, everybody knows that they could charge a vehicle if they own one?
I'm gonna let Noah weigh in, I, this particular ordinance does not address, uh, design development standards.
I realize that.
But, um. We are updating the 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 building code. Um, and I believe that has some E V requirements as part of the Cal Green. Um, tier one Cal Green standards.
So I think my question probably would be along the line of, if we're taking away a review capability, does that, where would? The the process of discussing upgrading. The requirement for E V ready parking. Where would that come into the into the review process or somebody bringing something forward?
That's a good question, and so we're not removing discretionary review, I think it's important to point that out. Um, we are still including design review, now design review. The way our code defines it is more than paint colors and siding and. Things like that, it is circulation, energy efficiency. It and, um, and that's where we will be talking about that, it's more of a design review. Element than it is a use permit element.
Uh, I would add, Vice Chair Hancock, we will have a codified standard for E V charging in the building code, so regardless of whether a project were to come before the planning commissioner or not. All projects will have to implement a certain standard, which will be reviewed by, uh, the city council and implemented and and they have given us direction. To ensure that we provide significant amounts of E V charging and we will be bringing that in the very near term. Separate from any, whether a project's discretionary or not, it's gonna, it's gonna be a mandated amount of parking that's E V. Ready and then also that as actually providing E V charging, I think you bring up a very interesting point, though, as. Uh, our project review slowly strips away any parking requirements. Uh, because that's essentially happening, that the parking minimums are going away throughout the code, uh, based on state mandates or as cities densify. Where will these chargers, the requirement for the chargers be implemented if there's no parking that's required? So that's gonna be an interesting struggle as we move forward to implement all of these various standards.
Right, and then what I'm reading on that elsewhere is things like lamppost charging. Being able to ensure that, I guess, in terms of that robust of the objective design standards, that the city actually has a plan. That for these areas would require enough. Infrastructure for. Um, if there was on street parking that somebody would be able to, um, acquire, have a have a charger ready. There would be charging that could be supplied as opposed to an E V ready spot where there's not a charger, but there could be one. So anyway, I don't think it's, she's telling me it's not directly relevant here, so thank you very much, but it should be part of that. Robust objective standards. And I I think that's my questions, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions from any commissioners? Okay, well, one question that I had was, um, Vice Commissioner or, uh, Vice Chair Hancock already asked the one about the. Appeals, the question of the city council appeals that I was also wondering the same thing, and I think I'm going back to it the last time this came before us. And I just wanted to cut a little clarification on how, um, in the ordinance we're changing the coverage, maximum coverage and also the height of the buildings. Um, and so I noticed that it was that. Uh, redlined out was the part about affordable housing, so I'm just wondering what other way are we also ensuring that multiple housing projects include? A variety of different affordability?
So any project under our standard, we have an inclusionary housing requirement, so any project has to. Dedicate fifteen percent of the units. To affordable housing and there's various tiers of affordability that are included with that, so very low income. Um, low income and medium.
Okay.
Uh, medium income. So, uh, for projects that are ten or more, uh, units, they have to construct those units as part of the development. Um, if it's nine or less, they have the option of constructing or doing a fee in loop. Um, for that, so that's our primary mechanism. And then 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 also applicants will take advantage of state programs, the the state density bonus program largely. Um, which gives them, it gives them a few different things that could increase, allows them to increase their density above our densities. Um, it would might have, it has lower parking standards in terms of fewer parking spaces. Um, it it allows them the ability to ask for concessions and waivers and things like that, so those are the two primary mechanisms that 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 we approach it with.
And the fifty percent is a minimum?
Fifteen.
Fifteen is is a minimum, okay.
That's a minimum, yes.
Okay, thank you, so now we'll go to the public and see if the public has any questions. I mean, public comments.
Thank you, Chair Lemus, currently there are no attendees in the audience, so that will end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll go back to the commission, if there's any final questions of staff. And if not, we can, um. Uh, see who wants to. Uh, move on the resolution, and I believe the resolution on page twenty eight, is that correct? I want to make sure I have the correct one. Is it, are these questions?
Your resolution begins on page thirty eight, after page thirty eight.
Okay, so it looks like, is there questions before? Okay, so it looks like, is there questions before?
Also, so Chair Lemus, just for a for a clarification on this, I think now would be a process where the commission discusses it, so. Um, I mean, and could include um comments or question, more questions to the staff, but if it's. If it's okay, I think that's what we should be doing on the commission is discussing it now.
Okay, okay. Did you wanna go first, uh Vice Chair Hancock?
Okay, thank you. I mean, li- uh my looking at it, um. Uh, and and reading this, I've gone backwards and forwards in trying to understand. So the sort of the issue, but to me, it seems like there isn't a lot of. Impact in Catati that we've um for this issue, looking at the districts and things, so. Um, and reading through the the council. Um, packets, I'm I'm not too sure I understand where it's going with the. Question on the quality of life that seem material effect on the quality of life. So just for me personally, it seems like it's not. Uh, a a major issue and 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 with the way the council's phrasing it, I mean, I I'm not sure I understand. The council can always override anything that has been brought up from the planning commission. Um, so I uh, you know, I don't, I don't think I even want to. Um, follow the review process, because whatever the council decides, they are in the end, they're the elected body and and that can go forward, but I I certainly. I mean, it just seems to me that this isn't really going to change an awful lot. Um. I certainly live, I mean, I purchased a duplex and over the years. It's gone backwards and forwards as to whether I'd ever be able to rebuild it again, and the style that I have if um. If I needed to, you know, if it was burnt down, sort of anything strange like that, um. So, you know, I think we're trying to get towards more flexibility in the way housing done with. People can build without, they can, they can add units on very easily, and that is the thing that makes the most sense. Economically, most of the time, as to add some sort of unit if you have the 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 land there, um, but if somebody chooses to make a. A bigger unit, it seems to me to make sense if that's what they want to do, and the other parts of the process will review it. Um, so anyway, that's just my sort of thoughts and comments on it.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Murphy?
Thanks, yeah, I just wanted to add, so I think, you know, I I recall this, and I think we had a pretty robust. Discussion about this last time, but I just wanted to reiterate my thoughts, because they came back to me as I was reading through this. Um, we've done a really good job at trying to meet the demands of the new laws within California in in regard to housing, but I think it's come up multiple times that. We're a unique situation where we're a very small city. Um, square footage wise, and we have a lot of requirements to fit into a small space, and so. I think, you know, as as Commissioner Hancock brought up, there isn't a lot of space here that's just open. Um, for this sort of building, it really is taking something that already exists and and I think creating a pretty significant impact to the neighborhood by changing it from. Maybe having four people in a two-unit building um to having ten or twelve. Um, that's heavily impactful to a community, so I guess I haven't heard yet the benefits really of removing the use permit except. Just for ease, um, and I'm all about uh efficiency. But I think going into this time when we have to make really important decisions about housing, it is important that. The community have multiple opportunities to speak to that and that they're very well aware. Um, I also think that um. And this doesn't go along with this vote, but it's still very confusing to me why our use permit requirements are aren't a little bit more streamlined and consistent. Um, you know, from personal experience, we got a use permit to put um a fence around our backyard. And while I appreciate our funding going to the city, that's actually the best part of something like that, is we know it's going back into the city. It's examples like that, or looking through the permitting process and seeing where we are requiring use permits, and then seeing something so, something that could potentially be so impactful to a community. And not requiring it, so that's where I'm kind of hung up. Um, I think it is taking. Um, visibility away from the community and the commission and 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 the city council, and so I wanted to share that those are my. Thoughts and um, and I hope that that's something the council will consider when they're reviewing this tomorrow.
Thank you. And Commissioner Savage?
Uh, thank you. I had similar thoughts to Commissioner Hancock, um, that it didn't appear to be something that's gonna have major. Impact, um, and that primarily was going to help in reducing redundancies that we have and to to work with our goal of making. Uh, the process simpler, um, and that's pretty much uh what what I took from my review of the information.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Moore?
So I I I kind of agree with with Commissioner Murphy, that, you know, a lot of this is now state-driven. And it's it's taken a little bit of of local control from housing. I don't see this having a huge impact unless we have big development goings in like the East Catati Avenue or a different areas that way. Um. But just having lived in an apartment for a long time in my previous life in Catati. Um, there was multiple families that lived in there that had like ten people that lived there. And um. You know, if people gotta live somewhere, so uh it was one of those things where. You know, it did have a little bit of impact, but not not as much as you would think. Um. But yeah, I think just with the streamlining of this, I like the idea that the council has the final say and that they have an appeals, um. So I I actually had one question of staff on that. On the appeals process for city council. It has to be in writing, can, does that mean like a or like an email or, I I mean. Just a quick question on that.
I think in today's world, an email would suffice, yes.
Okay, just curious, because sometimes with legalese that you have to have something in printed paper.
Yeah, no, I I think everybody communicates via email now, you see it all the time. I get legal stuff and via email all the time. It's it's accepted as writing.
Yeah, so I can see on both sides, um, but I. You know, like I said, I think state mandated housing is really driving this. To my point.
Thank you, and and I agree, I mean, I agree that um. SB thirty-five, SB two is another one, and there's a lot of housing legislation that's driving a lot of this. Um, and I just hope that through an ordinance such as this and the changes that we're recommending, that that will encourage. Uh, builders to move on some of the housing projects and 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 other infills that are available right now in the NM and NU districts. Um, so I don't have any other questions uh for this. I don't know if anyone else has any questions, or staff wanted to. Respond to any of the comments that were made today, um, before we go to the next step?
Um, only I would, I got of the opinion that it, I also agree that it's not gonna have much of a change, um. I I and I understand completely what Commissioner Murphy is saying and and. I I guess the only, you know, it's what we're not doing and we're not proposing to do is go to a ministerial process. So uh, there will be the same public hearings that would occur whether or not there's a use permit. This stuff with use permits. Is really a very internal technical thing, um, and legal, kind of within terms of making particular findings. I don't think the public. Really understands that or or engages with that aspect of a project, or maybe a project applicant does, and as commissioners you do. But I think the public here will, you know, view the process. It will, they'll find it to be very similar to the process that we have today. Um. And um, as far as housing advocates go, I think that we've actually improved the the proposal that would um. To our to our appeal the, or excuse me, to amend the appeal process. Um, makes that a more public process as opposed to an internal directed, um. You know, just one 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 council member directing who gets to decide on a project. Um. So um, I, you know, we're not doing anything to try to remove public, and I, you know, I think the reason you go, you uh. Had to get a use permit for our fences, there's no other mechanism to to let your neighbors know, hey. You're gonna build a fence that's taller than what we normally might allow, and you need to, you know, and it could impact you. So here's your notice, and here's a meeting where you can voice your concerns, and and we're keeping that. We're not proposing to eliminate that. Um, uh, cuz you know, we're we're not at a ministerial process, we're proposing that we move to that process. Um. Granted, the state may push us in that direction, and they are in certain areas, for sure. That's what SB thirty-five does, is it turns a discretionary project into um. In into a into a non-discretionary ministerial process. And and the reason you can get affected by SB thirty-five is by not building enough housing. Um, so Noah and I struggle to find ways just to help get the housing in areas where we said we we'd like to have it. Where we've said it would be appropriate so that we can still retain the control. Um, that the city has under under all under all the new legislation coming forward, so that that's my only response. Uh, happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you. Okay, so is there any other questions from the commission before we move forward with um, uh, motion on a resolution? Okay, this, uh, does anyone wanna make a motion on the resolution page thirty-eight?
I'll move to approve the resolution. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Uh, yes, please, just the yeah, the top part?
A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Catati recommending city council adoption of an ordinance amending section. Seventeen twenty-two oh twenty allowable land uses and chapter seventeen point eighty-four appeals. Of the Catati municipal code and to remove the use permit requirements for proposed multifamily projects located in NM. Neighborhood medium density and NU neighborhood urban. Residential zoning districts and revise administrative procedures for appeals by the city council.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I heard Commissioner Moore? Okay. Stat, can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Murphy?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to the next item. Uh, which is reports by staff.
Thank you, Chair Lemus. Just briefly, uh, actually, really briefly, I wanna touch on um. The community engagement, uh, portion of that discussion on the on the previous item. One thing that we didn't highlight in the urban agriculture ordinance, but uh it's a good thing for everyone to be aware of, is we added. A provision that any project that's over an acre uh will disturb over an acre in size, or that proposes a tentative map, which is a subdivision of five or more parcels. Uh, requires a pre-application neighborhood meeting now, so that is now built into the code. Where anyone who proposes a development like that has to meet with the neighbors within a three-hundred-foot radius before they can even apply to the city, and so. Uh, we really do take uh community engagement um. As an important factor, and have been trying to find opportunities to expand on that engagement and require it, and happy to to answer any questions about it.
Commissioner Murphy, you have a question?
Can you repeat it one more time again, just to make sure I fully understand?
So we created a process called a pre-application neighborhood meeting. And any project that's of any substantial size, and so what we called that was disturbing more than an acre of land. Or proposing a sub, a tentative map, so a subdivision of five or more lots, new lots to be created. Um, has to file, uh, has to go through a neighborhood meeting process with all the neighbors, so everyone within three hundred feet before they can even apply. So that gives the neighbors a chance to really see what's being proposed, maybe provide some initial feedback if. I always use the trash enclosure example, somebody's proposing a trash enclosure right next to somebody's bedroom window, it gives them a chance to move that before they even get into the design. So just know that that um, that is an important factor to development, and it actually makes projects better, because the more people that are brought into the process early. It helps get a project, um, you know, to be successful when we get to the end and. And a lot of people complain about, you know, they don't hear about anything on a project until it's about to go before the planning commission for a decision. And that's the worst time to let the folks know that something's been kind of baking in the city's oven for however long before, you know, we're going to present it, and so. That's why we created that Projects in Progress webpage, where as we get applications that are complete, we put them on the website. We send a notice of application to everyone around, letting them know that that's in and it's available for review on that page, and it's on the community development webpage. And then also now we've codified this process to require pre-application neighborhood. Things for, before staff would have to decide when to do that and when to not do it, and what we did was we codified it and said, similar to the neighborhood meeting. Projects that are over a certain size have to put that sign on site when it's going for action. So that way, maybe somebody who's just outside the notification boundary, but really would care about the project, would get a chance to find out about it. Um, and just, we're really making efforts to try to let everybody know about development as it's occurring and as early as we can. So just know that we do take that seriously, and we're happy to to have more conversations about things we could do to to improve our process. Um. So jumping into the department department report, but I I did wanna highlight on, highlight that, because I think it's important for everyone to know that we do take it seriously, and we. And we and you, as as decision makers, have been supporting our efforts and really giving us direction that we've been taken to heart to try to do what we can to improve that. Um. So this is our last Zoom meeting, uh, happy to announce, so moving forward, we will be meeting in person in the council chamber. Uh, the city council has their first in-person meeting uh since we went remote tomorrow night in the council chamber. Uh, so stay tuned for that process. We will uh be able to accommodate folks who wanna participate via Zoom. So somebody who has to be home with their children, or maybe is out of town for work and can't come to the meeting, can remote in, and and so. Frankly, our process will get a little bit more inclusive, I think, and allow more flexibility for how people participate. But decision-making staff, uh, city staff and appointed elected officials will all be in the council chamber, um. So that also being said, I do not see the need for any additional planning commission meetings this year, so we are likely to cancel the first meeting in December. Uh, and then obviously, the second one in December is right around the holiday. Uh, Chair Lemus, do you have something to?
Yeah, I just had a question about um. Mask wearing in the chambers, um, is it still recommended, strongly recommended? I know from the county side, you know. It's kind of recommended, especially right now with some things going around. Um, or is it just kind of a everyone's discretion?
There is a recommendation, but it is not a requirement, so it is at your own discretion, but we're following the health order from the county.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, and so, uh, as I was mentioning, this is likely to be the last meeting of of the commission for twenty twenty-two. Um, I'll confirm that uh very shortly to give you more flexibility in your schedules, but I don't anticipate uh the need for the the early December meeting uh at this point. What that also means is the first meeting in January will be canceled, because I think that's January second, coming right out of the holidays. Uh, but January sixteenth is the next day uh for a regular meeting and that of the commission, and that is Martin Luther King Day. So I'll look for an alternative meeting date, uh, which potentially would be the seventeenth. But uh, if you have conflicts with that, just let me know, and I'll try to do what I can to work around it. I don't know that we have any items that are gonna be ready for action on that date yet. Commissioner Murphy?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Um, I just wanted to ask for the January meetings, will the newly appointed commissioners be already implemented onto the commission?
Yeah, so I can't answer that question yet, that's, I was just about to get to that, so thank you, nice segue. Uh, so the the new commission date, uh, or application date will be opened up in December, I don't have a hard date yet, but I imagine after tomorrow night's meeting. We'll get some more direction on that, so we usually open it up for a certain period of time. Uh, so if you all know anyone who's interested in being a commissioner, we definitely have a vacancy in Chair Lemus's position. Uh, and then uh, anyone who is appointed by a council member who's going off uh the city council. Uh, you're welcome to reapply, and we would ask that you please continue to to um serve until you are either reappointed or replaced. And so there's gonna be this window where we don't, we don't know for a bit, um, but I think Commissioner Murphy, you, your appointing council member. Um. Is the mayor?
It's Mark.
Mark Lamon, yeah, so um, if you're interested in, so he will not be available to appoint you again, but if you're interested in continuing to serve, please apply. Uh, and then you'll be in that application pool for the new council members to reappoint you. Um, I I said, I don't have a date when that's gonna open, um, and I don't know, or I can't confirm that it will be decided. Um, and I don't know or I can't confirm that it will be decided by the January seventeenth date or the next meeting in January, but we would hope if it hasn't been decided that everyone continues to serve to make sure we have a quorum for our decision-making. I really appreciate that. So I'm gonna check my notes. Oh, what the uh, bylaws say, rule one of the bylaws, says that we appoint our new chair and vice chair at the second meeting in January. So just be ready for that. Ideally, we'll have the fully appointed commission, we'll show up to that meeting and we can decide who's gonna be chair and vice chair. Uh, and so normally we would elevate the vice chair, or I think the tradition in Catati has been to elevate the vice chair to chair and then uh, nominate uh, someone to serve as vice chair. But so please be ready for that, the second meeting in January. But the bylaws do give us flexibility if we're not quite ready to do that, to push that to a future date. Uh, that is all I have. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, hello, thank you. Yes, um, just wanna bring up a, or ask a question, something that I'm, I'm trying to be visible on is the um, the bicycle and pedestrian plan, um, and just what the timetable might be for that. I mean, it's, it was initially announced in twenty twenty-one and it slipped in twenty twenty-two. I think you said there was a budget for it, but um, or it was budgeted in some of the areas. So um, I, I just wanna ask, what's the status on that?
Yeah, so we, uh, you're absolutely right, there is a budget allocation of a fairly limited amount of money in this fiscal year. So we have six more months to spend that. We were hoping to, Catati for the last three cycles has partnered with the county. Uh, when they update their plan, we would update our plan. Um, the county and S C T A, Senate County Transportation Authority had applied for a grant in twenty twenty-one and we were hoping to, that they would get the grant and we would be able to ride with them again as they updated their process. They did not get the grant. And so that affected our kind of confidence moving forward. Uh, we didn't have the budget allocation for that time period. So we would have been trying to do it completely in-house and I was really worried about the adequacy of the document, especially given the Vision Zero and the Long Range Safety Plan processes that were ongoing. Uh, we really wanna be able to fold that, all of that information into the updated bike and ped master plan. So um, the, I, we met with the S C T A staff on their new effort. They have a um, they got the grant, they have a timeline for rolling it out and implementing. And we asked them if we, if we could continue to partner, partner with them. And the decision is made to do that, because I do think that is the, we'll get the best plan possible if we leverage their resources and add them to ours. Uh, but it will require us to participate along their timeline, which it's not proposed to conclude until twenty twenty-four. So my question to them was, hey, we've, we need this to be a priority. So is there a chance that we could uh, be prioritized and be the first of the cities to be um, chosen to move forward with our update while you're working on all of them? Because they do have uh, budget to allocate, or to update five cities in the county as a part of their overall budget uh, for their project. And they said they could prioritize us, especially because we've been trying to work with them for so long. Uh, and I also said that we could take our budget allocation potentially, if the council supports it and contribute it to their effort, because they were worried about not having enough funds to get it all done. So the uh, internal plan right now is to try to continue the original idea and our past practice of partnering with the county. Uh, leveraging our money to have them prioritize us to be the first one out of the gate for the, one of the cities to be done. And doing a very comprehensive plan that includes all of the update information from the Long Range Safety Plan and Vision Zero, in addition to their effort, which is very comprehensive in trying to connect all of the various circulation networks outside of Catati, or I mean, outside of the cities into the county's regional network. So that's the internal idea that we've been talking about. Um, that would require some compromise in uh, working with the county and not being a hundred percent in the lead. I do think it'll result in us getting a better, more comprehensive bike and ped master plan in the end. But we have to propose that to the city council, get their support. And obviously with you all as the bike and ped committee, we would bring the idea to you in a more formalized process with uh, more background and specifics, uh, asking for your uh, input on it before we present it to the city council.
This, thank you. So just uh, um, having participated in the last one, the um, where we went, you know, bicycle and pedestrian plan and the evolution, I understand definitely the S C T A side. Um, and being able to add more stuff to it and I guess um, Director Eris Weaver of the, the S B C has sort of said, yes, there's, there's uh, you know, very valuable side to that. But there's the community side, which is um, holding sessions or opening it up for the collecting information, which would seem to be separate from the S C T A collating it all and adding it up. So we have a very, we have a structured plan right now. Um, so how do you see that with, I mean, I, how do you see the moving parts working?
Well, one of the ideas was that we could prioritize trying to begin uh, gaining community input and putting together a conceptual project list and basically doing some of our own internal work to be ready to just hand that over for when the county or S C T A signs a contract with their consultant and really get a jump on that effort. So we've, we've kind of started to do a lot of the groundwork and the engagement work ourselves. So they could just take off running and get our plan updated uh, on the quickest timeline.
Right, cause there's, there's the commu, you know, there's the Catati community side, which has to be done, I think, through our budget. Whatever, and then the packaging, if, if I'm understanding this right, but the packaging of it and the producing the extra technical detail, that's really the value of the co, the county brings.
Well, yeah, so what, how it's explained to us is that the county actually has uh, in the, in the, the grant request, they included doing the bike and ped master plan process for all of the cities, regardless of individual budget allocations. However, we also have some money, it's thirty thousand dollars, uh, allocated from the council to try to do our plan ourselves. And so what I thought would be the best use is, we leverage that money uh, and some uh, process internally to begin, to begin to gather community input. And then um, ideally be able to jumpstart the process with the consultant, as I mentioned, by handing over our list of kind of projects and policies, including all the Vision Zero and Long Range Safety Plan uh, information into a package that they can just really, as you said, kind of put together and get the plan uh, into a nice format that's easily usable.
Yes, okay, so that sounds absolutely excellent. Now I'm just trying to de, decode that edge a little bit. Excuse me, sort of pressing uh, questions on here, cause you know, it's been a, a, a long-term visibility. But there is the, is it that the city will actually um, manage the process? Or is this being expected like with the um, Vision Zero, that it's handed off to some separate group altogether? And the city staff essentially are still, are their, their, their observers of the process as well. Is the city staff actually, you know, with that thirty K budget, is that what's envisaged? Is that the, the city staff will host these meetings? Or is it that the envisioning that the county takes it all over? And like project, like Vision Zero, it's all handed over to one group that does it. I'm, I'm.
Yeah, so we, we had, that decision has not been made. So um, last year, we were hoping to partner with the county. They didn't get the grant, so their effort went away. We went to the city council and said, hey, their effort went away. We know this is really important to the community. We need some budget to be able to do it. We got thirty thousand dollars. Frankly, that's not really adequate to be able to get a plan accomplished. Uh, but we were gonna try to do it, but then just all the various mandates that we were trying to address. Basically, we delayed and we weren't able to meet that. Um, we weren't able to get traction on that to date. That allocation is for the fiscal year, so it's there until June thirtieth of this year, twenty, I'm sorry, of twenty twenty-three. Uh, and so what we've been talking about internally is essentially the process I outlined, but we would bring that to the planning commission and our work plan. We would gather your input, which I think um, you're as a commission, and I think we would definitely want to have staff do some of the lead work, especially with our community members and really our engagement, coming forward with our own priorities. And then, as I mentioned, kind of have a lot of that ground truthing done and input received from the commission as, as the bike and ped advisory committee and then also community members. And just really have a, a prepackaged list that the, the consultants can just pick up and run with.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I mean, as I, as I've identified before, I mean, I'm just kind of phrasing it also for, for everybody else on here. Is, is that we're, we're looking at spending five million dollars on some new junctions, on a new junction on the west side. And if we don't incorporate the sort of the, an adequate pedestrian crossing in there, you know, thirty thousand versus five million, we have a, you know, there's potentially, we could end up with some of the the, the, the challenges we've got currently with pedestrians crossing large roads. And particularly if there's elderly people, um, if the senior living that it goes in some of these places. But thank you for the, thank you for the overview, appreciate it. Appreciate hammering away at it.
No, Noah, can I just ask a follow-up on that?
Absolutely.
Um, you mentioned the thirty thousand allocation for the BPMP uh, planning goes through June of twenty twenty-three. If we don't have a spending plan by then, can we compare it for twenty-three, twenty-four?
There is a process to do that, absolutely.
Okay, okay, so make sure we don't, okay, thank you. Okay, um. So thank you for the report and, and your, and thank you for answering all the questions that we had today. Uh, let's go to reports by commission. Uh, Commissioner Moore?
So I just wanted to say that um, the pocket park next to my house is getting redone. And the progress is going very smooth. And so I am absolutely thrilled to see it every single day becoming more of a usable space for our community that we all use in the L-section. And um, just to key back on um, the meeting in January. Um, we have a grandbaby that is going to be born sometime during that time. So um, I just wanna know, we might be at the meeting, we might not, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, our first ones, so.
First one, congratulations.
Yeah.
Exciting. Uh, Commissioner Savage?
Uh, yes, I just wanna report that I attended an open house in Napa that was put on by um, a Sonoma and Napa Housing Authority on auxiliary dwelling units. And they had two models that had been built and they had um, financial institutions available to talk to people. And there is also representatives from Napa County that had a packet of information that kind of went through all the details that a person would need to go through in order to um, build an, an ADU. There was no one there from Sonoma County, cause I was kind of surprised at that. But hopefully that information is available to residents in a, in a concise, user-friendly manner like they had there. Uh, but I thought it was a very informative and it was four different dates um, over the last month that you could RSVP to, to go to.
Yeah, I just, really, really quick, so thank you Commissioner Savage. They did the same thing here in Sonoma County. It was in Santa Rosa about three months ago. Uh, we did attend, we do have those packets of information available uh, for residents who are interested. And we also have an ADU webpage on the community development site uh, to help people guide them. And we are moving forward with a program to advocate uh, and support the development of ADUs. The council gave us some direction that they'd like to see some of the, the product that we would be uh, sharing with the community before we roll it out formally. And so we're in the process of getting that all together, working with the Napa Sonoma ADU Center to get it all in a package that we can present to council. But I really appreciate that, cause it is a critical way that we see being able to meet our, our arena obligations under the future housing element. And we do have a, a plan to advocate and create uh, streamlined processes to really support their development. So thank you for that and just know we are working on it.
Great, thank you Noah.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any reports? Well, I just want to share um, that I think this is my last, my, my official, could be my official last meeting on the planning commission. So I just wanna thank everybody for uh, the support. I joined in twenty twenty and so I'm just uh, sad to be leaving you, but I'm just transitioning to another uh, area. And I'm also transitioning from the county. I, I've been, I'm a thirty-three and a half year county employee. So December, my birthday, New Year's Eve is my birthday. That's my last day too. So a lot of changes for me, a, a new retiree and new city council person. So I'm looking forward to um, this new transition. And thank all of you, thank you staff, thank you other commissioners. It's been really a pleasure getting to meet all of you um, both here and outside of this. I've got to meet a few of you outside of the um, outside of these Zoom boxes. So that's been really nice. I hope to see you and, and talk to you soon. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you'll be able to read all our minutes, I guess, in the future.
I have plenty of time. Uh, okay, so then we'll move on to items received on the agenda. Was there anything else other than the letter that we got from um, Generation Housing?
Nothing else.
Nothing else, okay. Okay, so with that, it's seven twelve and we'll adjourn to the forty-niner game.
Yay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Bye, everybody.